Muleu Jesu. Ei, one, welcome to tonight's Bible study. This is Pastor Shangasi. Thank the Lord for this glorious opportunity, once again, to come before Him for the word of God. Shall we begin this session by prayer briefly? In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we give you praise and the honor. King of kings, Lord of lords, as we come before you, we pray that you are going to grant us grace once again, that which is in your heart, oh God, we pray. Let it be poured out unto us without hindrance. Cover us, Lord, and allow us, Lord God on earth, to be illuminated by the light of your word. This we pray in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. The topic is still on the law of subjection. We covered a ground last session on the law of subjection, and today we will be zooming into the law of the house. We are still founded in the book of Romans, chapter 13, verse number one, which reads as follows: "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." This is Romans, chapter 13, from verse number one. We are using the New King James Version. Before we can undertake our teaching, it is needful for us to define the central term for tonight, and we will be looking at the term faithful, because from the onset, this term will appear more frequently as we go on with the teaching. So, the term faithful is taken from the Greek adverb called priestos, which stems from a functional word called pieto, that conveys the following meaning: It carries three central points, or rather, three central meanings. First, it speaks about to persuade. So it's one term that can explain, or rather, carry a three-fold understanding. The first portion is about persuading. Now, to persuade, it merely, it simply means to induce one by words to believe. Alright, so further on, it speaks about a state of being persuaded. And a state of being persuaded is to have faith in a thing concerning a person. And when you try to look at it from all angles now, we can sum it up as a term that speaks to the state of trust, of listening, obeying, and having confidence in and complying with a certain standard or a certain command. So, faithful, in a nutshell, from definition, can be described in that following manner. We are going to see the facets of this word as we go deep into the scriptures, and needful for us right now to understand and to keep this definition in mind. So, we're going to be looking at the book of Numbers, chapter 12, from verse number one. We're reading from the New King James Version. As we read, then Miriam and Aaron spoke against Moses because of the Ethiopian woman whom he had married, for he had married an Ethiopian woman. Pausing a little bit, going back to what we have covered last time, we were looking at the law of subjection last session, whereby we concluded by the principle of God in James, chapter four, verse number six and seven, whereby we looked at the power of submission, and we looked at the power of submitting unto the authorities that God has given. Going back, we looked at the fact that the authority of God, as we have started reading Romans, chapter 13, from verse number one, that the authority of God comes in three facets. We've got the authority of God through the church, and we've got also the political, and also the authority of God in the family structure. And we went on, as we were unpacking and trying to find the heart of God pertaining the subject, we find that we are expected to submit unto the authority of the Lord, because God Almighty gives authority unto men in flesh. So whenever we see a figure of authority, we don't merely see the figure in human flesh, but we see the authority of God in these three spheres: in the church, political, and also at home. We went on, and we took it home, and we will look at the church and the current state of the church, that we are in a phase whereby the Lord is in the process of spreading, is in the process of planting, expanding the kingdom of God on earth. And this happens by his authority. Looking at the Great Commission, Matthew, chapter 28, the Lord says, "All authority in heaven and in earth has been given to me." And then from there, he began to dispatch this authority unto his disciples for the expansion of his kingdom. So you can see that the authority that the church uses is the delegated authority. We also looked at the five dimensions of power, the power of the Lord, and we looked at the time that we are in, that we are at the latter days, and we are in need of the perfecting power of God. And we also find it very interesting to see at the journey of the Lord, as he was going to the cross, going and being found in the Garden of Gethsemane. We find him under pressure because of the flesh, and we find him speaking and praying unto God, asking that the cup may pass, but we find him saying, "Nevertheless, not my will, but your will be done." And we looked at length in that passage of scripture, the fact that as the Lord submitted his will unto the will of the Father, something happened, the heavens opened. We find, looking, giving us an account that an angel came and strengthened him. So, right there, we picked up a nugget that whenever our will submits unto the sovereign will of the Father, power from on high, power from the source, power from whom we are submitting unto, is made available as the need arises. So, we found it very interesting that the Lord is Theos, Anthropos, but that that particular time, even though he had power to do as he wills, but we find him because of the assignment that he had to undertake on earth, that it was needful for him to undertake the assignment, yes, in the office of being God Almighty, but we find that assignment requiring him to submit in the office of being a son of man. So in Gethsemane, he was strengthened, though he had power. So, we saw weakness being displayed, and we also see the merits and the power of submission, because as he laid his will under the will of the Father, he was strengthened. Then the word of God said, "He continued more earnestly praying in agony." So, we saw there that even in our journey with the Lord, when power and when strength gets depleted, we do have hope that when we pray unto the Lord, submitting unto his authority, he is bound to give us strength to go on from Gethsemane to the mountain of Golgatha, where the all assignments that must be undertaken by us are bound to be completed. So that's where we picked, that's where, that's the ground that we covered last time. So today, we are looking at the house of the Lord, the law of the house of the Lord, and we are going to use the portion of scripture in Numbers, chapter 12. We are going to build up from verse number one all the way to verse number eight. We are beginning from the opening verse that is before us right now, as we read, from Numbers, chapter 12, verse number one. "Then Miriam and Aaron spoke against Moses because of the Ethiopian woman whom he had married, for he had married an Ethiopian woman." We see a double emphasis here. Holy Spirit is giving us the background of what is happening. The book of Numbers, yes, it is a book, it's part of the Pentateuchus, the Pentateuchus, five books of Moses. And we find the Lord giving us the population dynamics of natural Israel. One of the unique things that we find in the book of Numbers is the camping order of the nation of Israel around the tabernacle. We find that the gist of the purpose of God, that from ancient times, God always had a yearning. He always had a desire to dwell amongst his people. So in this book, we find the tribes, the twelve tribes of Israel, being given a pattern of how to come to camp around the tabernacle. Finding the tabernacle at the midst of the camp, and on the east, you find the arrangement of Judah, Zebulun, and Isisa, and so forth. So, the book of Numbers give us the population and even the numerical values of each and every tribe. Alright, so from this onset now, we are going to look at Moses and his characteristics pertaining the house of the Lord. Okay, right, from verse number one, we can see the scenario whereby the Holy Spirit is speaking on an incident that happened within the Levitical household. We know that Moses and Aaron were brethren. They came from the house of Levi, and also Miriam. They were of the same household. So now we see them, we see Miriam and Aaron now speaking against Moses because of the Ethiopian woman whom he had married. Now, what is interesting here is that the Holy Spirit is highlighting twice in one verse that Moses married an Ethiopian woman. Alright, so we are going to look at this at length as we go on. Okay. Maybe before, as part of laying a foundation, we just made a brief undertaking to look at the word faithful in the book of Revelation. Why the book of Revelation? We are currently in the end times, and the book of Revelation is the seal of all the revelations that were ever given to men by God. It gives us the culmination of the plan of God. So, we just wanted to look at how the word faithful comes, and what meaning does it carry as it is used in this last book in the Bible. We see it being used the first time in Revelation, chapter one, verse number five, whereby it speaks about the Lord being a faithful witness. So, right there, we see that faithfulness is an attribute of God, because the Holy Spirit find it important to teach us that the Lord is the faithful witness. Remember, that the Holy Spirit's ministry is to reveal and teach us about whatever that the Lord has taught us, and his ministry is to teach us everything about the Godhead. So he searches everything, even the deep things of God. So now, when he reveals the Lord in the book of Revelation, he describes him as the faithful witness. So we see the word faithful there describing the Lord, the attribute of the Lord. Okay, so, the next part is, it is also, it also appears in the book of Revelation, chapter two, verse number ten. So, as it is used in Revelation, chapter two, verse number ten, here the Lord is addressing the seven churches now. He is in the middle of his discourse, or his message to the seven churches that were already in existence in the time when the message was being penned down through the life of Apostle John. So he is now speaking unto the church of Samaria. So, he says, "Be faithful unto death." So, he speaks about the suffering that the church is going to be tested, the devil is going to throw the church unto prison, so that it may be tested for ten days, and then he gives them an exhortation or a command to be faithful until death. So now, from verse number one, from verse, chapter one, verse number five, the Lord himself is faithful. And then from verse number two, we see him charging his church to be faithful. So already, we can learn that whatever that the Lord is, in essence, he is expecting us to be the same as him. Alright, going further down, it also appears in chapter two, verse number thirteen, where now the Lord also by his very own mouth, he speaks about his faithful matiah, Antipas. Now, he's speaking to the church in Pergamos. He speaks about Antipas, that he was his faithful matiah, meaning that Antipas held on to the faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. Remember the definition of faithfulness that we have spoken about earlier on, that it is having faith concerning, of a thing concerning a person. So, he was able to hold on unto the teachings and unto the doctrine of the Lord, and unto the Christian belief, so to speak, even up to the point where he was killed. So we find a person in flesh bearing the attribute of faithfulness, Antipas. So, going further down, the Lord also in Revelation, chapter three, verse number fourteen, now he's speaking to the church of Lord Esia. He appears, he introduces himself as the faithful and the true witness. So again, this word points to the Lord, that the source, he is faithful. Alright, and also, in the remainder of the scriptures now, chapter seventeen, verse number fourteen, also, we see the elect of God, whereby the Holy Spirit is giving us a glimpse of the war that is going to happen when the Lord comes back to fight with his saints. Now, the group that are with the Lord, because in the book of First Thessalonians, chapter four, verse number thirteen, the Lord, when he speaks about the time where when he is going to come to rapture the church, he says, "When he comes, he is not going to touch the earth, and the dead in Christ shall rise first." Alright, "And then, and those who are alive and remain shall be caught up together with those who were dead, who were quickened first." Right, and then he says, "Then we shall forever be with the Lord." So those who are going to be forever be with the Lord, they appear again in the book of Revelation, chapter number fourteen, and the Holy Spirit makes it a point that he highlights that those are faithful, they bear the virtue of faithfulness. Going further down, the Lord also in the book of Revelation, chapter, verse number, chapter nineteen, verse number eleven, he appears now riding on the white horse. He is coming back again unto battle together with his saints riding on the white horses. Okay, now again, when the Holy Spirit pens down the Holy Scriptures, he says, "The name of the Lord is faithful." His name is faithful and true. And also, in some way else, it appears that the name, his name is the word of God. So it means, we find it again, faithful and true. These are the names of the Lord, and the name can be attributed unto the character, or rather, the characteristics of the Lord himself. Now, in chapter twenty-one, verse number five and six, chapter twenty-one, verse number five, we see him now as he seals the book of Revelation. He is alluding to the nature of the words. He says, "These words that comes out of his mouth, they are faithful." Okay, so, both together, the scripture in chapter twenty-one, verse number five, and Revelation, chapter twenty-two, verse number six, they have the same theme, that the words of the Lord that comes out of his mouth are faithful. So what are we picking up from this? We are picking up the fact that faithfulness is a virtue, is an attribute of God that is communicable. Now, when you look at the trend from what we are studying, from verse number one, we find the source of faithfulness, that it is the Lord. And when you look at the mid portion, Antipas, that's the man. So it means, Antipas was able to receive faithfulness from the Lord. So it means, just as the Lord was faithful, so he was able to impart faithfulness even unto a man in flesh, Antipas. And as we see him wrapping up in Revelation, chapter twenty-one, verse number five and six, we see now the words that comes out of him being faithful. So what does the word of God say? It says, "Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks." So it means, it is possible to stay with the Lord long enough, so that, in a sense, that as you stay with him long enough, you will begin to be like him. The principle is laid in the book of 2 Corinthians, chapter three, verse number eighteen, where the Holy Spirit is using Apostle Paul, comparing the ministry of the law and the ministry of grace. He says, "As we behold with unveiled faces, we are transformed into the same image, from glory to glory." So it means, as we stay with the Lord long enough, that which is in his heart, he is able to transfer it unto us through his spirit, just as Antipas was able to absorb faithfulness, because we are seeing from what is before us that faithfulness indeed is a virtue, is an attribute of the Lord. Alright, so, so that's faithfulness. So that lays the ground, that as we continue, these things, they do not have any other source, we do not find them in any other natural source, but we receive them from the Lord direct. Moving on, we can see, going back to the scripture that we have read earlier on, Numbers, chapter 12, verse number one. Now, there is a portrait in that scripture, because we see an opposition coming from the Jews within the Levitical household. Because now, the picture of Moses, Moses was a Levite, right? So we find him, we find the Holy Spirit pointing out that he married an Ethiopian woman. So, an Ethiopian woman was an outsider, was a person who was not a native Jew, so to speak. So, we see a picture of a Jew and the Gentile being jointed together in a covenant of marriage. So, right from there, we can see a prophetic picture of the church, because even from that onset, the Lord was bringing about a picture that in the coming days, there shall be a household that shall comprise of Jews and Gentiles. So we find an opposition now from Miriam and also from Aaron. And I would like to believe that just as the word of God declares in the book of Ephesians, that we wrestle not against flesh and blood, I would like to believe that that was an opposition from the enemy, seeing the picture of the church being portrayed before time. Because as we can see before us, that Moses stands for the cultivated olive, according to the book of Romans, when again the Holy Spirit is revealing this mystery to the Apostle Paul. He makes an analogy of a natural olive and a wild olive, that Israel is a natural cultivated olive, and then we Gentiles are the wild olive. And the Lord is crafting us, has crafted us in, so that we may benefit from the natural root. So Moses, we can see him representing this cultivated olive, and we can see the covenant of marriage being the crafting process, that taking in of the Ethiopian woman, being made one with this natural, this natural cultivated olive, which comes in the person of Moses. So, we can see that right from the onset, the Lord was giving a pattern that in the coming times, he is building a household that should comprise of Jews and Gentiles. And you can see that the devil was not happy about it, and enhancing the opposition from the very household, the Levitical household. Alright, so moving on, we can actually go back again in order to go forward, because when we're looking at, when we look at the house of the Lord, it has been, as we have alluded to earlier on, that God's intention is to dwell within men. This concept, or rather, this heart originated in God, even in former times, even when he made the first man. Looking at Genesis, chapter one, verse number twenty-six, we see God creating Adam. And as we read, "Then God created them, and God said to them, 'Be fruitful and multiply; fill the earth and subdue it; have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air, and over every living thing that moves on the earth.'" So, this is the commandment of God unto Adam. So, he was speaking to Adam, and then in Adam, there was a male and a female. So he's giving them a charge, alright, to be first, to be fruitful. Alright, so, he's giving them a mandate to be fruitful and to also multiply. But before we can get to that point, we can actually see that the fundamental, the fundamental unit, because now God is speaking from heaven, and he is speaking, he is extending his kingdom on this planet earth. And the fundamental unit for the population of God, God's people in planet earth is this house of God. And this house of God, we can find it in a man. Fast forwarding to the New Testament, the Holy Spirit says through Apostle Paul, he says, "Don't you know that your bodies are not yours, but they are the temple of the Holy Spirit?" So we are the dwelling places of God himself. So even right from the onset, Adam was the first house of the Lord, was the first abode of the Lord, because if you look at the book of Psalms, Psalms, Psalm eight, the Lord, when he made men, he made him a little lower than Elohim's, and he gave him dominion over the works of his fingers, and he crowned him with glory. Alright, so the glory of God abided upon Adam before he fell. So we can actually see that right from the onset, God's intention has always been to make a dwelling place in men. Matthew, chapter fourteen, made in the book of Matthew, and also John, the Lord speaks about a person who loves him. He says, "The one who loves me would keep my commandment." And then he says, "To the one who loves me and keep my commandment, I and the Father are going to come and make a dwelling place in him." So God has always endeavored, he has this intention of dwelling in each and every one of us. So now, the house is the basic unity for the population of God's people on the face of the earth. And this house is found in men. And this house, as we can see in the book of Genesis, can be termed as Adam. Right, so now, upon this house, now, God spoke a command. First, in chapter twenty-six, he said, "Let us make men in our own likeness, in our own image and likeness." So it's first the image and the likeness of God, and then after that, he speaks about what, dominion. And then in verse number twenty-eight, he further unpacks the mandate. Alright, he says, "Be fruitful and multiply, and fill the earth, and subdue it, and have dominion." So he gives men, he gave men threefold dominion, sea, air, and also, and also the earth. So it means, if we can take this in now assimilated, man is the dwelling place of God, and the first man, Adam, was given, there was an expectation of God over him. Okay, so it means, just as there was an expectation, an expectation of God is the law of God upon the house, upon Adam. So it means, from the onset, Adam was expected to harken unto the command of the Lord. So in other ways, he was expected to connect with God, to connect with the law of the mouth of God by faith. So it means, he was, there was an expectation for faithfulness in Adam. We know what happened, that as the serpent had the commissioning, or the delegating of the authority over planet earth to the human race, he devised a plan to cause men not to do or to execute the command of God, breaking the conduit of faithfulness. Alright, so from the onset, we find that in the first house, the man, called Adam, God created an expectation for mankind and for everything that comes out of the loins of Adam. Okay, moving right along, we can see, like going back to the book of Numbers, as we have stated earlier on, that we are going to follow the thread from verse number one to verse number eight. So now, God, now, we read verse number one, that now Miriam and Aaron, they are speaking ill of Moses because of his, because of him taking an Ethiopian woman. Now, when we look at verse number two and verse number three combined before us, the word of God says, as we are reading, "So they said, 'Has the Lord indeed spoken only through Moses? Has he not spoken through us also? And the Lord heard it.' Now the man Moses was very humble, more than all men who were on the face of the earth." Now, what is happening here? We see men in flesh trying to come, coming against the authority of God, because Moses did not choose himself to be the mouthpiece of the Lord, but it is God who ordained... But it is God who ordained that it was going to be Moses whom he is going to use to speak to the children of Israel. So we find the first case of rebellion. We, we find the first case, we find, not the first case, but we find a, a case of rebellion in this instance. We find the case of insubordination in this instance. Now, Holy Spirit highlights in verse number three, that now the man Moses was very humble, more than all men who were on the face of the earth. So we see now the Holy Spirit in one verse, verse number two and verse number three, we can learn the two extremes. We see Miriam and, and, and Aaron exulting themselves in pride. But in verse number three, we see the other extreme, that God is pointing to the virtue of humility in Moses. Alright, so these two, they are working like back to back. They are, they, they are emerging back to back in the same scenario. So in, in Miriam and, and, and Aaron, we see pride. And in, in, in Moses, the Holy Spirit is pointing, is pointing to his humility. He says, he was very humble, alright, more than all men who were on the face of the earth. So we are, we are going to pick that up as we, as we move on. Humility of Moses and pride in Miriam and Aaron. So moving right along, we can see now that when all of this happened, they were speaking amongst themselves, and Moses was not in their vicinity, because he is a man in flesh. But this verse now speaks about the response of God. So the scenario is in the terra firma, in the earth, but we see God hearing. Now, because whenever the enemy tries to come into our relationship with the Lord, he gives us a, a false, a false impression that God does not see. He, he gives us a blind eye to the omniscience of God. He gives us a blind eye to the omnipresence of God. So whenever we lie, we are sinning against the attribute of God, of omniscience and also of omnipresence. Because whenever we tell something that is not the truth, we are saying God does not know. We are saying God is not where we are. I'm reminded of Ananias and Sapphira. They did the same thing, they sold their property. And when they came, they did not give the proceeds unto the apostles' feet, as, as they were. They kept some of the money. And that was a grievous sin in the eyes of Holy Spirit. Because when Holy Spirit spoke through Apostle Peter, he says, you did not lie to men, but you lied to God. So the lying spirit is an attack to the, to the attribute of God, of, of, of him. It, it attacks his omniscience and his omnipresence. Because you are saying to God, God is limited. He is only in heaven, he does not see what you are doing. So we see the same thing here. Because Moses did not hear them, but God heard. Because this is the response as we read in verse number four. Silent and the Lord said to Moses, Aaron, and Miriam, come out you three to the tabernacle of meeting. So the three came out. Look at the order. When God speaks from heaven, he is speaking using the hierarchy of authority that he has obtained. He is speaking about Moses first, then he's speaking about Moses, then Miriam. Pick that up as we go on. He says, come out you three to the tabernacle of meeting. So the three came out. Verse number five. Then the Lord came down in the pillar of cloud and stood in the door of the tabernacle and called Aaron and Miriam, and they both went forward. Now, can you see the phases of separation now? These three, they were separated from the rest of the nation. Moses, Miriam, and Moses, Aaron, and Miriam. And then when they came at the door of the tabernacle, another separation came. The Lord called Aaron and Miriam, and they both went, went forward. So this time around, because of sin, we are seeing Aaron and Miriam stepping forward, going a further distance than Moses. Now, this is to their detriment. Because as, as, as we are, as we are building up with the scripture, we are going to see that God judged them. He pronounced a judgment to Miriam. Now, if we can pause a little bit from this onset and see the trend, or rather, what the Lord is saying to us. In the book of Joshua, he says, Joshua chapter three, verse number five, he says, sanctify yourselves, for tomorrow the Lord will do wonders in your midst. Sanctify yourselves. So these, Aaron and Miriam, they did not take, they did not make an undertaking to separate themselves, but they separated themselves unto sin. So what the word is saying, or what we can glean from this, is that there is no gray area. If you don't separate yourself for the working and the display of the glory of God. So not to choose is a choice. Failing to choose to separate yourself for God is an automatic choice that you are displaying to him, that you are choosing to stay in your sinful state, in your degenerate and repopate mind, an unconverted mind. So if you don't harken unto the call of sanctification, higher order of sanctification, just as it happens here, because the sin is on, is in our hearts, and we are slowly moving into the glory of the Lord. The Lord is going to do the same thing, he's going to call us. If, if we don't, if, if we don't undertake, take a, a moment, or rather, invest in sanctifying ourselves, he himself is going to call us. But as he calls us, it is going to be for judgment. Because the word of God in the book of Romans, it says, the wrath of God is revealed against all ungodliness. Alright, so failure to harken, to, to, to take the call unto sanctification is a choice again in the eyes of God, that you want to be sanctified for judgment because of sin. So we see this in Aaron. So Aaron and Miriam, they stepped forward, and they went forward. And as, as we continue, they went forward, and God judged them, as, as, as we have spoken earlier on. Miriam was lipless for seven days. And we, 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 the Holy Spirit points out the impact, or rather, the consequence of that incident, that the nation could not move for good seven days because of this sin, because they had to wait for him, for, for her, up until he is reconciled back, up until she is cleansed from the lip proc. Alright, so we can see that the, the failure for us to sanctify ourselves as individuals, it does not only affect us, our lives, but it also affects the entire nation as well. Alright, now, what we are following is, we are following the mind of God pertaining his house. And we are slowly building up unto the law of the house of the Lord. Because we spoke about Adam, first Adam. When Holy Spirit uses Apostle Paul in the book of First Corinthians chapter 15, beginning from verse number 19 to verse number 22, you will find in that passage of scripture that he, he points unto the Lord Jesus Christ as the last Adam. Then the first Adam, he says, all men die, but in the last Adam, all shall be made alive. So before the eyes of God, there is the first Adam and the last Adam. So as we have built the understanding, to clean the understanding that the abode of God is in men, and his intention was to dwell even in men right from the days of Adam. So, but we find the same theme being echoed in the book of Colossians, chapter 2, verse number 10, which is before us right now. It says, as we read from the new King James, for in him dwells all the fullness of the Godhead bodily, and you are complete in him, who is the head of all principality and power. So the book of Colossians speaks about Christ being the head, the headship of Christ. And if you look at the scripture in verse number one, chapter number one, verse number 16, speaks about him taking, being the firstborn of all creation, being the preeminent one over all things that are made. So again, the Holy Spirit in this passage of scripture teaches that in him, all the fullness of the Godhead dwells bodily. So the fullness of the Godhead dwells in Christ bodily. And further on, we understand that we are, we are the body of Christ. So it means if the fullness of the Godhead dwells bodily in Christ, it means it, it dwells bodily also in us as the church. Because we are complete in him, as the scripture says. And together, the church, we make up the body of Christ. So again, in, in First Corinthians chapter three, the Holy Spirit teaches that as we come together as the church, we make up the house of God. And as individuals also, we are the temple of the Lord. So again, we can see that the concept of the house of God began with the first Adam. And we can now move on to faithfulness, because the first Adam was not faithful, because he sinned. But the last Adam was faithful. So we are not in the first Adam right now, but we are in the last Adam. And the last Adam showed faithfulness, because he walked in obedience from start to finish. Alright, so now coming back to the case study that we are using in chapter, of, of, of Numbers, chapter 12, from verse number one to verse number eight. We are now in verse number six and seven. We see the Lord continuing with his case against the three that he has summoned. He called Moses, Aaron, and Miriam before the tabernacle. And we saw in the previous verse that he called Aaron and Miriam to step forward. Now he is speaking, verse number six, he says, then he said, hear now my words. If there is a prophet amongst you, I, the Lord, make myself known to him in a vision. I speak to him in a dream. Not so with my servant Moses, he is faithful in all my house. So he's saying now, I speak to mankind using the prophets. And he's distinguishing Moses from the rest of the prophets. He says, to the rest of the prophets, he makes himself known through visions and dreams. And but to Moses, funny enough, he does not call him his prophet, but he chooses to use the word servant. He said, not so with my servant Moses, he is faithful in my house. So we can see now the spirit of servanthood, faithful servanthood. We can connect the dots that walking in the spirit of servanthood, just as Christ did, according to the book of Philippians, chapter two, that he became a born servant. He chose to be a born servant, and he submitted himself even up to the point of death. And we find God, the Father, exalting him, giving him a name that is above all other names. So we can connect the dots that faithful servanthood, it, it grant us an opportunity to have a rich relationship with the Lord. And it grant us an opportunity to be able to behold the form of God, to be able to come closer unto the vicinity of where God is. Because when he speaks in Exodus, chapter 25, verse number 22, he, he speaks about the position that he says to Moses, I will speak with you between the cherry beam. So Moses was able to hear God and see the form of God, something that was not given to any other prophet. But we see God pointing out servanthood and also faithfulness. He says, he is faithful in all my house. So the law of the house of God is faithfulness. So it means if we are to please God in his house, because we have spoken about Adam, and we have spoken about Christ, and we have spoken about the church, and also have spoken about natural Israel in the book of Numbers, that it was the picture that God, his intention is to build his household in men. Now, the culmination of the household, of the house of God being built amongst men, finds itself in the existence of the church. And now, as he speaks, really in this passage of scripture, he says, Moses is faithful in all my house. So it means if we are to please God, and if we are to walk in, in a manner that pleases God, as he spoke to Abraham, he said to Abraham, walk before me, before me, and be blameless. Alright, so we are to work in faithfulness. So the law of the house of God is faithfulness. Alright, now, we can actually see, going now to the book of Revelation. Chapter two, verse number 10, we touched base at this scripture as we began our teaching. I would like us to look at it once again, because it also speaks about this essential virtue of faithfulness in the house of God. As we are looking at the book of Numbers, this was the Lord's, the natural house of the Lord portrayed by the nation, the natural Israel. And the Lord, as we have seen in the book of Numbers, chapter 12, he says to Moses, about Moses, that he is faithful in all my house. So now looking at the Revelation, chapter 10, reading from the new King James version, the Lord is now speaking to the church, the current church, through the church of Samia back then, because these churches were in existence. So the Lord was pouring out his heart to the existing churches. But the message cascaded, and it is also relevant to the current church. Now he says, do not fear any of the things which you are about to suffer. Indeed, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison, that you may be tested, and you will have tribulation ten days. Be faithful until death, I will give you the crown of life. Alright, now again, the word faithful appears. The Lord is using the word faithful in the scripture. He says, be faithful until death. So in his faithfulness, the Lord, he did not give them, he did not fail to point out what they are about to go through. He says, do not fear of the things which you are about to suffer. Alright, now, the church of Samia, he first speaks through the church of Ephesus, and then he speaks to the church of Samia. So if you go back in time, this, this was, was the time of extreme persecution to the church by the Roman emperorship. Because you, there was an emperor called Nero, and which, who persecuted the church immensely. And also emperors after emperors in this church age, they were very severe in afflicting tribulation unto the church. So when the Lord was speaking about sufferings, he was speaking under the political climate that was controlled, and that was controlled, yes, by the Roman government. It was an aura of persecution. Because looking at the excerpts in the church history, the likes of Polycep, who was a disciple of John, we find him living in these times, and they were the church leaders of the day. And when you follow how they died, they died in a very grievous manner. So the devil was trying to discourage people from following the Christian faith by killing its leaders and killing those who were faithful before the Lord. So now, but the Lord is, is, is raising the bar. And he says, do not fear of any, do not fear of the things which you are about to suffer. And we can see that even in our days, random, or rather, seldom, you will find a prophecy like this. We are familiar with prophecies of good things that are going to happen into our lives. But we seldom find prophecies about what we are about to suffer coming from the Lord. Because this is the mark of the Lord speaking to the church about the things that is going to happen to the church. He says, indeed, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison, that you may be tested. Then he also pointed out the time that is going to be ten days, the prophetic time, that this is, these ten days. He says, it's going to be a fixed amount of time, just as Israel was in Egypt for a fixed amount of time. So they had to be there for four generations. So also in this church, a fixed period of time was given for them to be tested. So also in this church, a fixed period of time was given for them to be tested by the devil, through them being persecuted and some of them being put into prison. He says, "Some of them," because the refining, the tribulations, and everything that we go through, they are employed to refine us. So the degree of refinement and the degree of resemblance, as we are measured against the standard of the character of Christ, is not the same. And that's why he says to some of you, you'll throw into prison, because the way the Lord works us, the way the Lord breaks our outer man, is different from man to man, is different from child of God to child of God. So, he employs different mechanism to break us, because the outer shell of our will is not the same. So he says, "Not all of you, but to some of you, he shall throw into prison, that you may be tested, and you will have tribulation ten days. Then he says, "Be faithful until death, and I will give you the crown of life." So now, faithfulness in this instance, in this scripture, is a passage between the natural lifetime and also eternity, because the crown of life will be given in eternity, at the present, in the glory of the Lord. So we can see faithfulness as a virtue, which is able to give us strength and a lifeline to stand even at, to even look at death, eye to eye, shoulder to shoulder, and to stand up until death and beyond. So we see faithfulness, the faithfulness of the Lord giving us a virtue, a mechanism of going beyond time and meeting our Lord, because he says, "I will give you the crown of life." So it means, through faithfulness, if we are faithful, if we possess the virtue of faithfulness, we stand a chance of going through all the tribulations that are ahead, and even up to the point of death and beyond. So what a bridge is to the traffic over the waters and over the rivers, it is what faithfulness is in our character. So, going further, we can see that this virtue of faithfulness is very important. And we are wrapping up right now, going back to the law of subjection, that as we submit unto God, as Moses submitted to the authority of the Lord, and if we shun away from insubordination of Aaron depicted by Aaron and Miriam, these are the results, we are going to enjoy an enriched relationship with the Lord. Because in the book of Numbers, chapter twelve, verse number eight, he now speaks about the type, the way in which he speaks with Moses. He says, "I speak with him face to face, even plainly and not in dark sayings, and he sees the form of the Lord. Why then were you not afraid to speak against my servant Moses?" So as we are wrapping up, we can actually see that there are many things that are at our disposal, that are competing for our attention. But what we need right now is the eyes of the Lord. We need the face of the Lord, and we need conduct with the Lord, face to face, as it happens with Moses. Because the grace that was given Moses is not only allotted for the select few now, because as the Lord came down in the book of Matthew, chapter twenty-seven, from verse number fifty, the gospels are telling us that as the Lord gave up the ghost, the temple that separated the holies of holies was rent from top to bottom, meaning that we are now given an opportunity to come from the outer court to the holy place, all the way to the holies of holies, to speak with the Lord. And he said in Exodus, chapter twenty-five, verse number twenty-two, he said, "I will speak with you between the cherubim." That is the place in the holy of holies. So it means, this face-to-face relationship with the Lord is available to everyone. And when we come to Him, we come to Him, we are not going to come out the same. He is going to impart Himself, just as He imparted Himself to Antipas, because he appeared as the faithful witness in the book of Revelation. And when we follow that thread of how the Holy Spirit uses the word faithful, we find this faithfulness being found in the spirit of Antipas. So as we move from where we are, separating ourselves, not waiting to be separated because for judgment as Aaron and Miriam, but taking an initiative to separate ourselves unto purity and unto the glory of the Lord, we can be found in the vicinity whereby we are going to be impregnated with the seed of the following virtues that are very important this season, the seed of meekness, the seed of faithfulness and patience. Because if there is anything that we need, it is the humility that God speaks about in the spirit of Moses. He says, "Because Moses was humble, very humble, more than all men on the face of the earth." We need this humility, we need this meekness, and we cannot get it from anywhere else. Job, when he speaks about wisdom in the book of Job, chapter twenty-eight, he makes a very orderly undertaking. He says, "There is a place where gold is mined, there is a place where silver is mined." But when he breaks the chapter in the midly, he says, he asks a question, "Where can wisdom be found?" And then as he closes, he said, "Now to the children of men," he said, "To fear the Lord is wisdom, and to shine evil is understanding." So, we are in need to work in such virtues, to fear the Lord and to shine the world, so that we may be able to seek the Lord. So as we seek Him, He is going to impregnate our spirit with the seed of meekness, faithfulness and patience that we need in this current dispensation. Book of Hebrews, chapter six, twelve, he says, "Be ye not slothful, but imitate those who inherit the promises through faith and patience." This is the age of inheriting, of inheriting everything that was ever promised to men in flesh, but it requires us to have the virtue of faithfulness and patience. So as we are closing, can we pray that the Lord may help us, that as we are in His house, it started with Adam, and Adam, the first Adam was not faithful, but the last Adam was faithful, and we can see that this faithfulness can be imparted. Now let us pray to the Lord and say, "Lord, help us to be faithful." Shall we all pray? In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we ask in prayer that this invitation may be honored, Lord, God on mighty, that we may move, from wherever we are, in the secret chamber whereby you are going to give us the seed of faithfulness. For we see that above everything else, in order for us to be fruitful, in order for us to multiply, in order to us to have dominion in this current domain, we are to bear this faithfulness, in order for us to stand even in the trying times that we are about to face, even up to the point of death, so that ultimately we may lay hold of the crown of life. We need this faithfulness. We pray therefore, Lord, as we are in your house, just as Moses imparted on us, and give us even a mind. We pray by faith, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen.